It is 6:10. Call the Policy Committee meeting to order. Juanita, if I could get a roll call, please.
Lisa Gainer.
Here.
David Codano.
Yeah.
Arthur Perry.
Present.
Mary Rosmangia.
Here.
Randy Brockway is absent. And for the record, Mrs. Morello and Mr. O'Brien will not be in attendance tonight.
Juanita, do you, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Public comment, no comment. Okay, then we're just gonna move right into Item C. Item C is second, second readings for policy updates from the ISB Press Update 83. Starting off with Policy 5:200, Terms and Conditions of Employment and Dismissal. Again, this is a second reading. During the first reading, we accepted the update to legal reference. There is a footnote that was provided on education reform laws which was replaced with a web link to the ISB PIRA overview for school board members. So mainly it's just a legal reference update to the policy. Can I get a motion, unless there's questions, can I get a motion for approval of a second reading?
I move to accept Policy 5:200 for second reading.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are then going to move Policy 5:200 to the regular business meeting for final action later tonight.
No, actually, probably next month. I don't think we have any of the policies on this meeting. Sorry. Sorry, we'll just have to carry them over.
We have no policies into our regular business meeting.
Correct. Correct. Let a ball drop here, David. We'll have to catch them next time.
August. August.
July.
There is a July meeting.
July, oh, yes, yes, July. Yes, we talked about that last. Yes. It is July 15th. Okay, so it'll be brought up on the July 15th regular business meeting for final action. Moving along to Policy 6:60 on curriculum content. This reading updates on curriculum contact on Item 8, on health education in accordance with child sexual abuse and assault prevention education, or Aaron's Law. Item 8 now will include age-appropriate sexual abuse and assault awareness and prevention education. So this is at all grades. Formerly, it was only for secondary schools. If I could, we had asked Babna or Dr. Gannon to just give us a, an update on what it means for age-appropriate or how District 96 is going to determine age-appropriate, because this goes all the way down to kindergarten, up to eighth grade. So what guidelines do we follow?
Well, we're still working on identifying those guidelines. We've, we did some research and we reached out to the Provisal Children's Advocacy Center in Broadview, the YWCA, Robert Crown, other districts, Bartlett, Butler Junior High, Naperville 203, and so on. And it appears, as of right now, the school districts that we approached or talked to are still working through this. They're, they have the same questions we have.
Okay.
So right now, I'm in the process of reviewing some of the programming at these different sites. I will say that from what I've seen so far, I haven't seen anything that would be appropriate for, I would say, any grade level under third grade. So we're really still looking at that, what that K-2 looks like.
Okay.
Our second step curriculum, though, was mentioned in several school districts that I talked to, as well as one of the contacts that I made, that the second step is a, is a good place to begin. And we just purchased that program last year.
Okay.
So we're looking at a little bit more consistency with how the program is used, as well as, it doesn't appear that it's a curriculum that, as of right now, we will get through like an entire curriculum in a year. So we need to be sure that we're choosing the lessons that associate with Aaron's Law.
Okay.
And that is a grade level appropriate, grade level-based materials. So I don't have a great answer.
Okay.
I think a lot of people are struggling with this right now, as far as, when you go on the Aaron's Law website, they, well, Aaron's Law website has some suggestions, if it's a website that was actually created by Aaron, from Aaron's Law.
Mm-hmm.
But when you go on to other websites for Aaron's Law or any of this state stuff, they don't, they don't really make any recommendations for curriculum that I, that we have found.
Okay. Thank you for that, okay?
Sure.
Okay. So any questions on this?
Like, there's, there's stuff too, like, I, I was just online and I looked at my former school district, which is District 59, and they have some, some information on the website of Aaron's Law about some presentations that they've done. I am not quite sure what grade level it was at, but it kind of gives you an idea of some of the, some of the information that's out there, what some groups are doing. Again, it's, it's finding that balance for age-appropriateness and getting the message across.
What do you think our timetable is for?
As soon as, I'm not trying to hand this off, but when Pam Shaw comes in, I want to have conversations with her, because she is from District 203.
Okay.
And they've, they're in the process of this as well. So she has a little bit more insight, and I'd like to just work with her to, to come up with a more specific plan.
Okay.
So I would say by, she starts on the first, so, I mean, by, by the July meeting, we can give an, oh, there's a policy meeting. Is there July?
It'll be August.
Okay, so by August, absolutely. Yeah, we'll have an update by August.
Okay, August update?
Yeah.
Can you just confirm, I think I heard you say that the current SEL curriculum, we don't get through the whole thing in
I don't think so.
In one year. So we're selective in lessons that we?
I think we're gonna have to be.
To address it.
To make sure that we're addressing it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I don't think the way it's structured that we are able to get through the whole curriculum. So I, I think if that is the case, which I'm pretty sure it isn't, we need to make sure we're picking lessons that are, you know, appropriate to address this area without skipping lessons that are cyclical that lead into one another.
So again, 660, just an update on Item 8, adding the language that we will have age-appropriate sexual abuse and assault awareness and prevention education in all grades. Can I get a motion to approve this update for a second reading?
I move that we adopt Policy 6.60 curriculum content for a second reading.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 660 is approved for second reading, and we'll advance, we'll move that to the 715 regular business meeting for final action. Moving along to 6:250. This is on community resource persons and volunteers. This was, there's an update related to hazing as a result of a, as, as a result of legislation. It updates the policy by adding a sentence that reads, "All volunteer coaches must comply, all volunteer coaches must comply with the requirement to report hazing as in Policy 5:90, abuse and neglected child reporting." We do not have volunteer coaches in our district currently, but we agree that we, we should just put this language in just, just on the chance that we might have it. We might have a need for volunteer coaches. Okay? So along with this, just in support of this, we would also add in an exhibit that is a template waiver form that has this agreement, acknowledgement, that would be signed by the volunteer, in the volunteer coach. So can I get an approval for a second reading for the update to Policy 6:250, community resource persons and volunteers?
I move that we adopt Policy 6:250, community, community resource persons and volunteers for second reading.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, sorry. I said aye, not opposed, sorry.
Okay. So we'll move that to, to our regular business meeting on July 15th for, for final action. Policy 7:185 on teen dating violence prohibited. Okay, there's a, just going through the changes here, the first paragraph, this is a new, this is a new policy on teen dating. But in the update, we're making the following changes. First paragraph referencing a student who is 13 to 19 years of age. We're changing that to reflect in grades six through eight, so students in grades six through eight. We're deleting a reference to the dean of students, we don't have a dean of students. Again, there's another reference of grades seven through 12, we're gonna change that to grades six through eight.
And this has not been changed currently, right?
Correct. So we're gonna restate number four on page, page two of this policy update. So we're gonna restate this, this, this sentence so that reads, that the, that we shall, shall develop and maintain programs that incorporate, that incorporates education for school staff pursuant to Policy 5:100 on staff development, and as recommended by the non-discrimination coordinator, building principal, assistant building principal, and/or complaint manager. The last thing we, we talked about at our last meeting was asking our superintendent to confirm on the district procedures for notifying students and parent guardians of this, of this new policy according to Item 5. Babna, do you have an update for us on that?
We are going to put this in our teacher, excuse me, our parent and student handbook.
Our what?
Parent and student handbook.
Parent and student handbook.
Do we have one?
Yes.
Hmm. So I'm confused, were those changes talked about and not put in for this reading? Or they were?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We definitely talked about them.
Yes.
Because they're not
They're not
They're not, I don't think they're in here.
They should be.
Maybe I'm not looking at the right thing.
No, they're not, they're not. So 13 to 19 was not.
They should be though, right?
Yes, they will be.
I mean, they will be for the, okay, but
They will be, sorry.
No, no, no.
So it wasn't, it wasn't redlined in here, it wasn't, we don't have a redline version.
Right, okay. That's what I'm, I, I was confused, because I thought potentially they should have been redlined in here for the first reading and then approved in the second reading, but I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right, I'm understanding.
Yeah, I don't know, do we have that a bill, I guess we could take all this, copy all this for, I mean, in future, copy all this and then put it into a Word document and then redline it?
Yeah.
Is that
Well, I'm not trying to make, I wasn't trying to make more work, I was just trying to understand.
I remember, now I'm remembering that there was one policy that I thought we needed
to see the redline version. I don't remember if this was it, though, so.
Neither do I, but.
Anyway.
I mean, for some of the policies, we've done that in past, we just didn't do it for this one. But is everyone, does everyone see what changes we made?
Totally. I just was wondering if I was supposed to see them reflected in the document.
Right.
And so what you're saying is for the second reading, they will be reflected in the document, and that reading will be approved as we've discussed with the changes in it so we can see them and then post it.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be the best approach, is that for the final, for our final action.
Okay.
At the regular, at our regular business meeting, that we'll show it redlined, this is what we're gonna change.
Well, or it could just be changed as, and ready to go.
The clean version.
Yeah.
A clean version.
What we're gonna actually adopt, yeah.
Okay.
And again, I'm not trying, I'm just
Well, what's the preference, a redlined or, or clean?
Or both.
Well, I don't know, because like in the other ones, there was the
Because generally, we, we look at the, the redline version that is, is actually given to us from
IASB, right?
From ISB.
And though this is different, because we're making these changes.
Yeah, but if we're making different changes over and above what ISB makes
We should reflect.
We need to, we need to reflect that.
Yeah.
Obviously, can't go into the policy manual
Right.
Unless we make that final version.
Right, right.
We can make the changes using the ISB tapes that they send me on this.
Oh, you can do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right, that's what I did for that one policy that I sent you. I redlined it myself.
Okay.
Using, not creating another document, just using
Right, using the existing document.
Okay.
So they give you a Word format?
Right. Right, on the disk that they send.
Okay. So that'll be our plan, is what you see on the July 15th regular business meeting for, for final action, we'll show that.
I think that would be
Redline, this is what we, this is what we changed, you know, specifically, this is what we, we've gone over and beyond.
Right, and then those redline changes
To be appropriate to us.
Approved will be what we see posted online in the document, in the manual.
Do we need a motion to adopt this, or have we already done that, or?
Yes, yes. Can I get a motion to approve second reading of 7:185 on teen dating violence prohibited?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Babna, that, that parent guardian handbook, that's, that's distributed at the beginning of every school
Correct.
The school year?
Mm-hmm.
And is it available online, too?
Mm-hmm.
It is, right?
Up until this year, it's been in draft form, so we adopted the IPA, the Illinois Principals Association suggestions. So we will have that updated in August when students come back. It'll be final form.
Okay, so moving along to Policy 7:300 on co-curricular athletics. Let's see, we just need an update to the legal reference, and that's the, that's the only update. We did not accept the cross-reference with regards to catastrophic insurance coverage as it, as it does not apply to K through 8 districts. It's only for secondary. So, so again, the only update to 7:300 is just a update to the legal reference. So can I get an approval for a second reading of 7:300?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy 830 on visitors to and, visitors to and conduct on school, school property. Okay, we had, we have some ISB recommended updates related to the definition of school property. That's in the first, first paragraph under definitions. And then there's updates to the prohibited acts while on school property or at a school Related to weapons in Item 3 and Item 8 were related to alcoholic beverages and illegal drugs. Okay? Again, there was some optional language with regards to concealed carry act, which was not recommended by our board attorney to, to accept.
Say that again.
So there's some optional language here that talks about possessing a weapon.
Right.
Possess a weapon, any object that can be reasonably considered a weapon or looks like, the concern by our board attorney was that this is, this is so fluid right now on really the enforcement of this act and how state attorneys are going to interpret it, how it's gonna be applied to school districts, that he's, the recommendation was to allow it to be reviewed by those authorities, by those bodies, and then, then decide at a later time whether or not we want to add in this kind of language in here.
Okay.
So when it's next review, will we go back and look at that?
Yes. Or sooner, depending on how, you know, court cases, legal
I think it's every two.
Every two? Or every five years?
Or five.
Every, every five years
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
We review it. I, the, I believe the intent was more that as the courts review it, as states attorneys, different offices look at it, Cook County versus DePage versus the state, look at how this applies, especially specifically to school districts, then we can decide whether, how we want to proceed forward.
In other words, as we get more information
Right.
As it went through the system.
Okay. Okay, okay. So with that, then, can I get a, a motion to approve for a second reading, updates to Policy 8:30?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry to interrupt the vote, there is one more update. I can't show two of the update.
Update three, maybe?
Update three.
Yeah.
Yes. So that's on Item 8, a new item on, regarding to medical cannabis. And that relates to the policy that we had updated, 5:50, that, that we updated and approved at our past board meeting.
Okay, sorry, I, I think the motion still stands in my mind, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of these updates?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's, moving to Item D, updates on policies from staff board and, and community. We have, this is Policy 460 on purchases and contracts superintendent spending limit. This is something that we, we've discussed at the policy committee, and we've also not, also discussed at the finance committee. There was recommend, recommended, added lang, new language for Policy 460 that would Okay. So in Item 1, after, when presenting a contract or purchase for board approval, the superintendent or designee shall ensure that it complies with applicable state law included, but not limited to those below. So here, the recommendation from our, from our administration is to add in the, the red language, the underlying language, that supplies materials of work involving an expenditure in excess of $25,000 between 15 and 25, and at least $5,000 but less than $15,000 must comply with the state law bidding procedure. And then, associated with this is the additional item in your, in your packet on the procedures. And those procedures outline what happens at those various categories, spending categories.
So just a really quick question.
Sure.
Must comply with state law bidding procedures. Is there a, is 25 associated with state law? Yes, right?
Yes.
15 to 25 is not. And then those procedures go, the attachment of the administrative procedures are used for the other
For those other categories.
Yes.
Yes.
Does it, is it confusing with this state law bidding procedure when you have those that are not?
I think so. I think so.
So should it be a second sentence? Do you know what I mean?
Just the red line?
Well, I'm
Yeah, so, so you keep
Because it's not really, those are not state law, and by what, how I'm reading this, I'm reading that, that when you put that in there like that, it, it reads to me, and maybe the, I'm reading it incorrectly, so I would look for others' opinions, that those two are state laws, which are not. Those are our own
Those are our own
Procedures, right? So I think it's important that it's stated, but maybe just we make a second sentence or something.
It says what?
Yeah, because this is the specific, you know, because this says unless specifically exempted, I mean, well, this is more, this is specific, we're gonna take these other categories of expenditures and apply, and apply some other procedures to it, right?
Right, but so, is that what, is everyone okay with the way this reads?
What sentence are you talking about?
So the very first sentence.
One. In number one.
In number one, item one, item one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The underlying part.
All right. Supplies, materials of work.
Do you see what I mean?
Yes, oh, yeah.
I agree with you, Lisa, I
I think it should be in there, but I, I don't, I mean, I have to work on some
Why don't we leave it as supplies, materials of work involving expenditure in excess of $25,000 must comply with state law bidding, bidding procedures, and then unless specifically exempted. 1B, the attached procedures must be complied with between 15 and 25,000 and at least $5,000 but less than $15,000.
Something like that.
Because then you, and then you just look at the procedures are right behind the policy.
Right.
Because it has nothing to do with the state law.
Well, that's my point, and when it's in there, you're associating with the state law.
Right, so if we did like a 1B, saying following the procedures according to the
Procedures attached to this policy?
Correct.
Shall apply
To
To expenditures between 15,000 and 25,000 and at least $5,000 but less than $15,000?
Right, exactly.
What does number four mean? Third-party non-instructural services must comply with 105 ILCS.
All right, let's get, let's get to that, but let's, let's
Okay, you want to clarify that line?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one, so 1B, so I'm saying procedures attached to this policy shall apply to expenditures between
Between
15,000, 15 and 25 and at least
25 and at least 5,000 but less than 15.
Everything in the red, everything that you have.
So
The 1B is the attached procedures.
Procedures attached to this policy shall apply
To purchases.
Right, and then just pick up that sentence.
Expenditures, right?
Or expenditures between
Between
Everything
Everything in red.
Everything in red.
Yeah. 15K and 25K and at least 5K, less than 15K. Is it, is it worth just tightening that up and just basically saying between 5 and
25,000.
5 and 25?
Mm-hmm. Or all expenditures between 5 and 25,000 must comply with the attached procedures?
Right. I mean, even though there's different ones for different limits, it doesn't matter, they're all listed there.
Yeah, because, because the procedures exhibit will actually break it down.
Right.
Right.
So you're saying just say, for expenditures less than 25,000, the attached procedures must be followed, something like that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Right, less than 25, greater than 5.
There's no real reason to, to break it down into the categories in the policy, that the procedures themselves will, will break it down. Agree?
Yeah, because you're referring to those attached procedures.
Okay.
It'll be right behind it, or right next to them.
So someone suggest the language? So just for
For expenditures
For expenditures
Less than $25,000, $25,000 or less.
$25,000 or less.
Be following
The attached
Sorry, I had it a minute ago.
The attached procedures should be followed.
Attached procedures must be followed.
Or the, the procedures attached to this policy.
Policy must be followed.
Procedures attached to this policy.
Must be followed.
Must be followed.
Must be followed?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Do you need to put five, because it's really only five to twenty-five, so zero to five needs nothing?
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, to five, for expenditures.
Five to twenty-five. Because less than twenty-five would, would read to me that.
Yes.
Any expenditure, and it's really five to twenty-five. Because zero to five, there's no procedure that goes with it.
Okay.
So.
So between?
Yeah.
For expenditures between?
Five and twenty-five or twenty.
Five K and twenty-five K.
Right?
Yes.
Does that capture it all?
Huh? Yes.
Yeah.
Right, but between five.
Before we move off this topic, I want to say something about the procedure language.
Okay.
I don't want to skip your question.
Why don't you go with yours first, since we're kind of already on that.
Make sure David's comfortable with what we're having.
So I got, for expenditures between five thousand dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars, the procedures attached to this policy must be followed.
Okay.
Comfortable with that?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we're okay with, between means that it will include twenty-five thousand? Yes, okay.
And those are outlined in the procedures?
Yes.
Wow.
Okay.
When I get through with them, they won't be.
Okay, so let's go to the corresponding procedure, administrative procedures.
Okay.
So questions?
Yeah, I think for purchases valued between fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five thousand doesn't match with what was in the red in the actual policy, I just think it should say, for purchases valued between fifteen thousand and twenty-five thousand, as we just said, that's, between is understood to mean inclusive.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay, so we're changing.
Fourteen nine nine to fifteen, right there.
Fourteen nine nine per rank. Okay, other changes?
That's it, for me.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on, on that specific item? Specific?
Yeah, no.
Okay, so let's go to the question on four, item four, just clarification on what that means, party non-instructional services, is that the question, is on the non-instructional services, what that means?
Yep, what do we understand that to be?
I actually just Googled the actual law reference itself, and I'm not a lawyer, so I don't, don't take my advice, but it doesn't actually really explain that.
So like roofing, it was a non-instructional.
All it says, just says third-party for non-instructional services currently performed by any employee or bargaining unit member.
Oh, it says someone, a someone on staff that's performing this.
Well, if the third party is brought in to do work that was being done by an employee or bargaining unit member, there's some rules that need to be followed.
Like technology.
Huh?
Like technology.
Well, it doesn't give examples in the actual law, language in the law.
Is, is.
Can you follow up?
Let's use that example. Would we consider technology a non-instructional expense?
Yeah, if it's, if it's just, if it's something that, I guess, we had an employee who used to be handling the purchases of, you know, internet, and now we give it to a third-party vendor to procure our, our internet services?
But why would that be non-instructional? It would touch kids, I mean, it would touch instruction.
Well, like I said, to me, it's this is.
It's gray.
Well, the other thing is why I'm having, we're also talking about in the context of having an employee who used to do it, and is that what, this whole, is that the.
That's what it sounds like the bill is about, right?
If I may be, cafeteria would be a perfect example. Because the cafeteria is a member of the bargaining unit.
Yes.
But if you bring in outside people to do their work, I think that one oh five ILCS refers to the, when I talked about the cafeteria workers, I, I think that actually is, is that, that's what that is.
Okay.
Yeah, the first point is, a contract must not be entered into and become effective during the term of a collective bargaining agreement.
Well, that sounds exactly what we were talking about.
That where that agreement covers any employees who perform this service, so.
That's right.
That's a good example.
Yes. Topical.
Any other questions?
Does that clarify that?
Do we need further?
Yeah, I guess it kind of clarifies the whole list.
It's one exit, one example of that.
But it also seems to clarify the whole list, when presenting a contract for purchase for board approval, between a certain amount, it must comply with basically all these laws.
Right.
Listen, okay, but where did this draft come from, this fourth?
This is current policy.
And is it sort of pretty much mirror the IASB, or did we?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I don't, I don't believe there's anything in here that's specific to D ninety-six.
Yeah, until now.
Except what you just put in.
Until now, until now, now, now we're tailoring it. Okay, so what I have here, to recap, we are going to add a one B, and it's going to read procedures attached to this pol, oops, no, for expenditures between five thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars, the procedures attached to this policy must be followed. And then, the administrative procedures that have been proposed, we're going to make one edit, we're going to change fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine and make that fifteen thousand.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I will have that, we'll have that reflected for, for our next policy committee meeting, but with that, can I get an approval for a first reading of, of?
You know what, before, so.
Yes.
I, I can't rem, you know, it seems like a long time ago when we discussed this, so I'm trying to kind of read this and actually figure out what this thing says. This last paragraph, the superintendent or designee shall execute the reporting and website posting mandates and state law concerning district contracts and maintain a status report for presentation to the board semi-annually, monitor the discharge of contract contractor performances and quality and value of services or products being provided. Exactly what would be our expectations there to fulfill that paragraph?
Well, I think we did get a report from Bob at one point on the website of all the things that are, have to be posted there and what's not.
Yeah, in our audit.
I would expect that we would get that annually or however we do it.
I think that's a part of that process.
Right.
And all the contracts are on our website.
Are they?
That exceed twenty-five thousand, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's in accordance with the state, the mandates in the state law.
Okay.
And our annual statement of affairs, we have to list, we have to list all contracts over twenty-five thousand.
What was that again?
Our annual statement of affairs, it's like a condensed, very condensed version of.
And does that get posted? Is that, is that on our website? Or is that just presented to us on an annual basis?
It's, I completed on an annual basis, you can obtain it from ISB website, so we could also.
Okay, so it's filed with the ISB?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm probably confused because of calendar error. So would we be looking for everything to be posted between, you know, fifteen and twenty-five thousand now, instead of excess of twenty-five?
No, that, no, that's not a stamp, state law.
Okay, but our.
No, we would go through the process here.
Like all of our administrative contracts.
To get written price quotes and all that.
They are. Let me take a look at something here.
Per the administrative procedure, will, how will the Board of Education be, you know, notified of the purchases between fifteen and twenty-five thousand and once, you know, five thousand and fifteen thousand?
I would do it through the anticipated expenditures that I do monthly, and I'll have the quotes with me, and I've done it a couple times before.
Does that make sense, Mary Rose?
So what do you mean, you, you're going to let us know of every contract between?
Well, purchases.
Purchases.
Purchases. Any purchase, and you'll do that through?
Either through my, during the monthly board meetings, through my anticipated expenditures, or we can send out a.
Or through the finance.
Finance committee and.
Right.
Or the, or finance committee meeting we're at.
But the, but it's also anticipated that we would also approve those, via motion?
Well, that's.
Not in the procedure, that's why I'm bringing it up.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's sort of, how does this work?
Well, our discussion was about, you know, making sure that we get.
Three quotes.
Three quotes, that we're, we're getting multiple bids out there, that we're not just going off and just getting one bid and then, and then running with it, and making, assuring us that we are getting, you know. The price, a reasonable price, competitive, a competitive price, I should say, and the quality that we want, that we, that we vetted it properly, and so this is kind of just going through that process.
When you say we, that's the administration, it's an administrative procedure. My, my question is, how does the board become aware of that, outcomes of those things? I think that's something important.
Yeah.
If that's the case, and here's what I would ask, that not only does the anticipated expenditures show whatever it is and how much it's going to be, but what were the bids and things like that, does that seem like something that you guys would want to hear about?
Yeah, I think it's there, huh?
That would have been the initial nurse's office relocation, where I actually had a spreadsheet that showed the three bids and then provided the supporting documents for it.
Well, this past school year was twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, so. Sorry, we're having a separate conversation.
This current.
Okay.
This current is twenty thirteen, fourteen.
Well, this says twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, I don't see one for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
Oh.
I mean, unless I'm missing something, that's what I said, I just happened to cross this the other day, so that's why, you know, I said, you know, I kind of.
Sure that was probably on the audit, on the list, on the audit, we don't have that updated.
When, I don't know who, the, the person that audited the website, was that part of that?
Yes.
And then all those changes were going to be addressed this summer?
This summer, this, with an updated website, some of the stuff could be some of the stuff, but we should update those contracts, the specific contracts over twenty-five thousand.
There's a list of items, so we could just walk through.
I mean, I would think they would be added as soon as they're approved, right?
Which ones have we, do you recall anything recently that we've done over twenty-five thousand?
Not that, not that we have had anything over twenty-five thousand, but when I talked about the construction of the nurse's office, I had the spreadsheet, it had the three bids, and then I also provided the actual quotes from, from each construction company, and then at that point, it was decided, let's, we didn't move on it, we decided let's look further, so nothing was pushed along and passed through, so.
Well, and I guess to Art's point, your point, is if they're moving along and they just need us to know that they do, that they did follow the three bid procedure, to just have a way to report that back to the board, and basically it could be.
All I'm looking for is a way to validate that the process is being followed.
Right, it could be, just basically, we're going to use.
Not necessarily an approval.
No, just the notification.
Yes.
So we're going to use Joe, Joe's window cleaning service for twelve thousand dollars, and we checked in with Lisa, David, and Mary Rose's service, and they were five and fifteen, or whatever.
Is this, is this process, is this policy only about making sure a process is followed?
Yes, that there's, that there is a process, and that's.
Or is, or was the intent of, of lowering this limit aft, actually be involved in whether we want to purchase it at all regardless of the process?
Right, so the, the discussion at the pol, at, at the prior policy committee and at the finance meeting resulted in this, in this, that there should be these categories, and it wasn't, it wasn't the, what I heard was that it wasn't saying that we should lower the threshold of approval for expenditures below twenty-five thousand, that, but there needs to be, we need to start off with, there needs to be a process that if you have these expenditures over five thousand, then you need to follow some other, some additional steps to ensure that we are getting competitive bidding.
Right.
So, is that your understanding?
Yeah, and, and then. Because, I mean, it came up because we wanted to have, in a couple instances, we received one and we wanted three.
Right, right, because one wasn't just, one isn't enough.
All right, and then my other question is, procedures, you know, even, even though we want, you know, we're lowering this threshold, wouldn't we also want to post things at that threshold?
We're not lowering the threshold, we're just creating new categories in which we're imposing an expectation of, of a process, of, of additional quotes.
Okay, this is something different than superintendent spending limit, is it?
It's within.
Is there any other policy?
It's not lowering the superintendent's authority, and with regards to her limit, it just happens to be in that, it's in this policy.
All right, is there any other policy that addresses the superintendent spending limit, or is this it?
This is it.
This is it, I think.
I mean, this is the policy we've been talking about at finance policy, or policy, finance policy.
Yeah, I, I rec, I, I recognize that, you know, you know, that I may not.
I mean, this doesn't say that we're going to stop talking about it either, this is just saying that we're going to, we want to, this is the, this is the practices that we, that are being followed now, and we want to put them in to our policy, and we want to have.
I get that, and I, you know, I recognize that I may have missed something at these previous discussions, but, you know, I somehow thought the intent was something.
No, that, that was a question on the table, whether to lower the superintendent's spending authority.
Yeah.
Below twenty-five thousand, but there was no consensus on that. What we did get consensus on is that we want to establish these different categories and these procedures that would follow, that would coincide with those categories of expenditures.
All right, so that means that we can go ahead and update this with this thing that we have consensus on, and then the next month, put it right back up and talk about other aspects.
Well, yeah, well, actually, I mean, that's why I went to the finance committee, was because spending limit is related to finance, and that's really, and so, what I, why I kicked it over to finance was to say, all right, you debated under finance, and if you want to change it, then, then you can come back to policy, to the policy committee, and then we all amend, amend policy, but we, that, that didn't come out, come to fruition.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so those are, so we're just adding one B to the policy, and then just making that one amendment to the proposed procedures.
And then to reference here, we'll check the website and see if there's any contracts above twenty-five thousand executed for this year.
Okay.
And so, I don't, I'm not suggesting that the procedure needs to be changed, but I think, at least my expectation as a board member, is when we see that, and I'm talking to you.
Zach.
Zach.
I'll listen.
That those bid, that bid information is provided to us.
But, yes.
Because that would be the first question I'll ask, is, are you following procedure?
Like, for example, the nurse's office, like he provided you three quotes.
Is that going to be less than twenty-five thousand?
The initial one was not, when he provided those, like three additional quote, the three quotes for you.
Well, I mean, and it would like be things like copiers or whatever, if that.
I understand, I was, since you brought up the nurse's office, I was just.
No, 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 but I mean, it could be as simple as that, but you would get three bids for, I would, or whatever, for the same kind of service, and we would see that listed.
Okay.
There's a bid out there now, or idea out there that executes the.
There's a bid out there now, or idea out there that exactly, or later, that the nurse's office, that could be below twenty-five thousand.
Okay, well, I mean, whatever it is, it's, okay.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, I think overall, the intent is to create more transparency, more communication about how we're spending our money.
Right.
Right.
All right, so now, this is going, this is a first reading.
Yes, yes, yes. So, go through a second reading, and it'll be posted.
Okay.
So, with that, can I get a motion to approve for a first reading, this update to policy four sixty, along with the proposed administrative procedures that would support that policy?
Somewhere.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, okay. All right, policy seven thirty, this is actually a second reading.
Just, again, kind of, just not necessarily going back to the policy, but going back to the website, when would we expect those contracts to be posted, is that?
I'll let you know, we'll.
I mean, is that something, is that something that's done by our staff here?
Okay, okay, that's all.
My main question, I guess, thank you.
We'll review them, and then we'll just post the ones that are not.
Is there any reason why we couldn't post them all, any contract?
You know, we actually, we are required to, again, when I'm speaking, speaking about the annual statement of affairs, then we turn it to the state, and we put in the newspaper in October, November, we list any contracts over five hundred dollars are listed on there. So, what, we can put the annual statement of affairs on our website, and we'll have.
But that lists the contract, it lists the contract, doesn't give you an opportunity to, well, I don't know, actually, if I click that, would I actually be able to read the contract?
I think on that one, on the one you're.
It won't, no, it gives you the contractor's name and not the, are you looking for like more detail of what?
I'd like to see the contract. Is there, you know, you know, and I don't know that I want everything over five hundred dollars, but, but I, yeah, I'd like to, you know, if we enter into contracts, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to have the option to be able to read them without, without actually bothering you and asking you to pull them for me. I mean, that's, that's basically it, what can we put out there? And again, I, I want to be, I don't know how, even in a general sense, how many we're actually even talking about, is it hundreds, is it twenty, I don't, I don't even know, but that's kind of the nature of the question.
Well, is that a discussion that we could have at the finance committee, about those contracts and posting it, and what limits, and just.
Well, that, but also, the administration does have some idea of what this, you know, conglomeration of contracts looks like, so I'm hoping that they can sort of give us a feel for, you know, what, you know, what, what they have, so that we could make some useful.
All right, so can we have that discussion at the finance committee?
You know, what we could do is maybe divide them up, contracts like anything less than five thousand, fif, you know, five to fifteen thousand, and then fifteen thousand to twenty-five and twenty-five over, and we can just list them, see how many there are, and then if they're, how much effort or work would it take to put them all up on there?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, just sort of get, try to get a feel for how many, how many contracts do we enter into a year, and what are they, what are they like, and, you know?
Now, in the list that's out there for the twenty-five and over for 2012, 2013 is, you know, ten or less, so.
Yeah, but like, thanks for, and it's just a list, it's not the contract themselves, it's, I didn't.
It's just a list of, of names, which you could then, you know, request a copy from the district office, I assume, if you wanted to.
Oh, okay. All right.
So, maybe that's just a report, you know, at the July meeting.
And we'll try to pull all the.
Does that sound fair?
We'll, we'll pull the list.
I mean, I guess I'll just say that, if you look at the list itself, it includes, you know, administrator contracts, because those are greater than twenty-five thousand. I mean, I don't know what the expectation is around that, but that's sort of personnel information to a certain extent.
All right, so when you, all right, so after you subtract the personnel contracts, then there's almost nothing there over twenty-five thousand?
Well, no, no, there's like ten.
There's ten in addition, too.
And I think a lot of those were for the capital and.
I was going to say, they're probably construction related.
They were all, yeah.
I think, I think there's going to be an interest in seeing consulting contracts, and I think there's going to be an interest that if we have a consultant, they have a contract.
All right, so let's, let's, we can have that discussion.
Okay.
Let's stick, let's stick with the policy.
It's noted.
Okay.
Agenda.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So, it's, we're moving on to item E, other business, this is on ISB's.
Wait, 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 what happened to D two?
Oh, seven thirty, right.
Did you do that already?
No, I have not.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I wasn't listening properly.
Again, this, this was a, just a, an edit to make sure that there was a reference in our policy with regards to two exhibits, existed exhibits in that policy regarding class size policy and student assignment policy. Again, this is for a second readings. If there's no questions, I can, like, get a motion for a second, to approve the second reading of the update to seven colon thirty.
Somewhere.
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, that will be moved to the seven fifteen, regular business meeting for final action. Item E, this is ISB's administrative procedures, this is something that we've talked at length at prior policy committee meetings, we've talked at the finance committee about these administrative procedures. This is something that I believe that needs to, we need to start developing these procedures to be able to ensure that we're implementing policy on, you know, accurately and consistently throughout the district. This is one proposal to start us, start us down that path. We've had discussions that this ISB administrative procedures does, is not totally comprehensive, but like I said, it's, it's a first step. And so, before us is a contract. Bob, do you have any other comments about that?
No, I did talk to Steve Humphries from Accra, who said, you know, if this is one, this is one way you can go, it's probably the most economical, but that if there were certain procedures that weren't up to quality of what the Board or administrators were looking for, that they would be happy to provide the service at an hourly rate as well as our attorney, too. So, if there's specific things.
So, frantic.
Frantic, correct. So, the same things, is that they just, they can't, their prices can't compete with what ISB is doing to do a complete audit and creation of ISB procedures because they're charging an hourly rate.
I, is there a contract that's been presented, or is it just that flyer?
No, it's, there's an actual agreement in there.
Okay.
So, this is not, this is not something for approval, this is within the superintendent's spending limit, but this is something that, it's put on this agenda for, for this committee to opine upon, to basically say, we, we support this. This is not only a part of implementing the policies that we are creating here in this committee, but it's also a part of the superintendent's contract goals to develop these procedures. And so, you know, I would like to see this committee give some direction to our superintendent that, yes, this is indeed something, we want to take this step.
The contract goal, I think, has to be met in July 2015, so we have.
Sure, it's around the corner, it's a year away, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's, so we have some time. And, but, here's my feeling, is that basically we're going to hire a consultant, they're going to come in, there isn't, nobody from our, our staff has gone through and even identified policies that we think are critical to be developed.
That's my understanding, is that, that's what they would be doing, is doing that audit.
Oh.
For all of it.
All right, so we would be hiring a consultant to do that rather than our own staff.
Right, because our staff are pretty.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, I just, and, and we do not have a plan to really deal with internal controls that have already been identified as a problem.
Right, we can deal with that as well, on a.
But not, this is not.
Not through this, not through this. We'll see, we'll see what happens with, with this.
Yeah, I just, I, like I said, it's, it's, it is a policy contract goal, but that can also be changed as well. In other words.
The superintendent's contract?
Sure.
Okay, well, that's a whole different discussion, I mean, it's contract negotiations.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we can.
The current contract requires.
We can restate goals, and it's through twelve, July, by the way, when, when would they come in, how long would it take them to do this?
I don't know. When I initially talked to them back in March, they said if you get it done, you know, the sooner the better, because they do a lot of their work in the summer, because that's when, obviously, it's downtime for school, downtime for administrators, so that you have the time to interview and go through everything. I don't know where their schedule is right now. So, if we called them up tomorrow, I don't know where we would be on the list and how, how quickly they would assign someone to do it. I think this entire process would probably take several months.
And, and, I mean, I, I, this, this thing doesn't impress me, it just doesn't.
Okay, but it, it isn't necessary, I mean, it may not be the priority for you in terms of the financial internal controls, but it's still, in order for our superintendent to meet that goal of developing procedures to support the policies, all the policies, they're going to have to, the non-sexy type policies have to be.
I, I guess maybe I'm, I'm questioning, I don't, like I said, it's, the fact that we're talking about hiring a consultant for the purpose of meeting a contract goal rather than the value of.
As well as the policy.
I, I agree, let's take that contract goal out of the conversation. Do we think this has value to the district?
Right, that's the question.
That's my question.
Well, we currently have no.
I have an answer to that question.
We have no procedure manual currently.
That's the challenge that's being faced by our superintendent and our administration and our.
And how have we been hurt by that? Do we know?
The inconsistency and.
How, have we have an example of how this has hampered? Is there any, anything that we could do to identify some critical policies and procedures that we can put in ourselves? I mean, I, I recognize this is a very limited amount of money that we're talking about, but I, I guess what's bothering me is we're going to go out, based on a flyer, bring somebody in, they're going to do a lot of work, and I'm going to say this in the context of the website. We, we had a consultant come in, do some work on the website. By the way, our attorney had already identified the things that were in our, on our website that were non-compliant. The consultant came in, and we're, it's almost imperceptible what got done there. So, I just want to, like I said, it's imperceptible what got done on that website, we never saw.
Well, the work on the website hasn't been done yet.
It hasn't.
Right, because we're so.
Since July.
We're so.
Oh, I'm sorry, then, then I can't perceive it if it hasn't been done, thank you.
I think that the, it was supposed to be addressed this summer and updated over the summer.
Yeah, we got the report from that consultant, we identified what needed to be done. The work to make those fixes hasn't been done yet. I, I would just suggest that this seems like one opportunity to go through a process, and I'm hoping that there may be some limited scope on what this ISB consultant will help us with, with certain procedures, but maybe through the process, we can help us focus and identify those, you know, critical control, financial controls, et cetera. Because right now, I don't have a sense of it either. I don't know what, where we're, we have gaps or not.
Yeah, that's what I can't get a sense.
So, I don't know what the answer is, but maybe this will help us get there.
Well, who, because we've been talking about this for three months, and this is why I'm putting this on the table, to say, does the policy committee support taking that first step?
Right.
Well, I guess here's my question, who would be responsible for managing this internally?
I would be.
Starts with the superintendent.
Yeah, I would be making that initial contact. So, for example, there's a hundred policies. The first ten are related to special ed. We would go through them, and we would work with our special ed director and/or any staff that she sees that would be appropriate. The second set of policies would relate to technology, we'd, their technology director. I would be coordinating all those. Let's say they come back with ninety out of the hundred procedures complete. These ten are not complete, then we can talk to an outside consultant, we do it ourselves, or we work with our attorney. And if the, of the ninety, if you feel that those aren't done in a quality way, we can update them or revise them, just like we're doing with policy four sixty. We created that procedure.
I don't, I don't think the, I, I think they will come up with procedures for any policy they have. The question is the quality of the, the quality of the policies and the scope of what the policies themselves even cover. So, while, you know, you know, and who's going to tell us these, other than us, that the scope of these policies are not helping us with regard to internal controls and hiring?
Hang on, can I clarify something? You keep saying policy, do you mean to say procedure?
Procedure.
Because it's an audit of procedure, not policy.
No, I mean to say policies. They're going to come up with procedures for everything that they have, is my understanding. The policies have critical gaps in, when it comes to hiring, and even, even just reading the spending limit, it just doesn't.
That, well, okay.
It just doesn't address a lot of stuff.
So, the answer, I would, my reaction to your question is that this will not help us find gaps in policies, this is for procedures.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Policy, if I could, I'll just make one more statement, that policy, we have a press service that is helping us maintain our policies, that we go through eighty-three, eighty-four, there'll be an eighty-five. Those are what we're getting to just help us keep up with ongoing legislation, da, 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 as far as ISB is concerned. We also, as, and I'm, this is your thing, I'm sorry that I'm like, sort of saying this, but, but, but then, we have update on policies from staff, board, and community. Yeah, that, that's on us to identify what those gaps are. So.
Yeah, so like, so like, policy five thirty.
This proposal for procedures will not get us on those things. We have to just keep working on it.
Yeah, and that's why in August, I presented a bunch of priorities for District Ninety-Six, specific to District Ninety-Six. One of them was the hiring process, so policy five thirty, which unfortunately has taken us nine months, is finally on our agenda here for discussion, but it looks like we're not going to be able to discuss it tonight. But we will at some point.
I think what we need to do, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mary Rose, is identify as a board and as a leadership team, what are policies that we feel aren't being, aren't being implemented with fidelity.
Efficient in some way.
But procedures, we don't have any administrative procedures. So, this is a starting block for how to create procedures that support policy. If we don't like the policy, then it's up to us to identify that policy and change it.
Right.
No one is going to come in and say, audit our policies. We follow the state policies.
No, this is basically creating a procedure manual for the current policies that we have approved in policy, because we don't have an existing procedure manual.
Correct.
And it, it may, as a side effect, highlight certain things that.
Right.
Are not right in policy, but I don't think that's the intent, but that could just happen.
I don't, I don't think that'll happen. I think we'll get, I think we'll get a procedure manual that'll go along with these policies, and maybe, you know, they'll be used internally, but they really, it's not really going to help us identify the guts of our, you know, the, the guts of operational procedures.
Better be done.
And, and, and I, I agree that while it probably doesn't hurt, you know, I mean, for six thousand dollars to do these procedures, I mean, I've talked to Steve Humphrey about this, too. He said, a lot of districts don't bother with this, you know?
We haven't done it for.
It's never come up in my time on the board.
Especially now with so many new administrators and so many new building principals.
And, but anyway, but, but, but anyway, but, but I don't want anybody to think, just because we're going to go and do this audit, that we, we're going to solve any, you know, that we're still, it's not going to bring us to really looking seriously at internal controls and hiring expense management, and it, it's not, and.
I think that's probably true, and if we need to audit those kind of policies, ISB might not be the ones to help us, since they're already helping us with press. If that's not doing the job, you know, we need to get some other input on that.
No, this is, this is, I, I don't view this as step A. I view this as just completing the policy service that we're getting by adding the procedures, and it's a pretty easy thing. And it's a pretty easy thing to do, you, you hire press and you just do it. But we still are not focusing on internal procedures that have, internal control is a better word, on, on, on things that have already been identified as lacking oversight and, or potentially lacking oversight.
So what I would like to see us do is take care of this low-hanging fruit, move it forward, give, give support to our superintendent to move forward with this, and then let's start tackling the bigger, bigger issues.
Well, yeah, well, I'd like to hear us talk about the bigger issues, and the other thing is in terms of her contract goals, if, I mean, we can decide that, you know, she has done, you know, that she's met the requirement by bringing it to the board, and, I mean, I mean, that's within our control, we don't say she doesn't do it, and because we won't allow, I mean, if we don't allow her to do it, that doesn't mean she didn't do it.
That's fine, I, I'm not concerned with that particular aspect of it at this point, especially in the policy committee, I think we just need to look at the end result of what, what can it give us as a district.
Yeah, I.
I, I think, you know, just to echo what David said, we need to prioritize those other areas that you're referring to on the policy committee agenda and start driving through those. It's a very slow process, unfortunately, but we just need to keep at it.
And if, um, and if I were gonna hire consultants, because I think we probably will have to do that, to look at our internal procedures, that would be where I would want to spend the money. I realize this is not a lot of money, um, but, a lot of money, but if I had a choice, I would apply it towards, uh, internal controls, because we are gonna have a hard time writing those procedures with both the time and the level of knowledge we have.
Right, and we'll, and we'll put into place these new practices that I'm sure is gonna be, you know, potentially a costly venture, and so we'll have to get the, a few services come in, some firms come in and present what they, what their, what the plan is, and then we'll have to decide.
This is for the second piece.
So let's, let's agree that this isn't gonna be the silver bullet.
It's not.
We need to do other work.
Yeah.
We need to come up with a plan of attack for that. If you, you meant, you, you said a minute ago that we've already identified these things, well, that's the first step. Then we need to find somebody to help us make that, make those.
I don't know if we have, I don't know what they are, I have.
Well, I think, no, I don't, we haven't thoroughly identified, but certain things have come through before, you know, which are, are well-known.
We need to get those down on paper and start prioritizing them and finding who can help us make it, make it happen. I fully support that.
So what we're here, what, it was, it's on the agenda here for this policy committee to voice its support or its opposition to our superintendent moving forward with this purchase of this service. Because we've been talking about it for three-plus months, and we either need to do it or, or say, no, we're, we're not going to buy, we're not gonna purchase the service. I think it's essential that we, we have that, we have procedures, and it's that the district leadership team individuals know that here's the procedures that you need, you need to follow and needs to be consistently implemented across, across the district in all buildings.
I support moving forward with, with this, or giving her direction moving forward, I don't know, Eric or Mary Rose, what do you want?
Yeah, I support it, I, I think it's gonna be an interesting exercise, I'm optimistic that it will help us find some interesting things that we need to fix or improve upon.
Mary Rose?
Uh, I would probably table this to a later time, I, it just.
Well, I, I approve, I, I support it, I, I would like to see our superintendent move forward and, um, with the district leadership team. Okay. Okay, so.
It, should we, are we allowed to give direction at a committee meeting, or do we have to do that in a regular BOE meeting?
This is just saying that this, the policy committee supports the, the purchase of the services that implement the policies that, that this committee develops and, that this policy committee develops.
All right, so is that authorization to move forward, or she had the authorization to do it anyway?
She has the authorization.
To do it anyway?
Right.
All right.
This is more for just discussion and deliberation.
Right, right, thank you.
Okay. Five minutes? Okay.
Are we adjourned?
Let me, okay, the, the next, the next group is, is first readings of press issue eighty-four, updates. I'll say, let's, let's table it to the next.
Five colon thirty?
Oh, five colon thirty, yes, where's five colon thirty?
Item F.
On the printout, it doesn't.
I think item F, the title, isn't really accurate.
Let me, let's, let's just do this for, for the next couple of minutes, is, did anyone, has it, has, have you had a chance to, to read through it?
I am looking for some guidance.
Okay.
I, I guess I read it, didn't really get it.
Okay, let's, uh, let's start off with just some, some background, so this was back in August, I had made a list of specific policy issues that I felt that were key issues for District ninety-six. The hiring process, procedure, uh, policy five colon thirty, I thought should be, that when I talked to Superintendent Charmer Lewis, that this should be a, a, one of the top priority policies that we should, we should be addressing in terms of moving, giving direction to the district on how we hire highly, quote-unquote, highly qualified candidates. What does that mean? What is the direction? So that sort of, that came up in September to this policy committee, that kind of morphed into, well, what kind of procedures do we have? How do we ensure that all our hirings are done on a consistent basis? So that, that became a, a working committee that was headed up by Rachel Morello, and they came up with some more, some broader procedural, procedural provisions that would be incorporated into policy. They, that was brought back, I think, January or February, in February. That went to our board attorney, and they started vetting it, going through, how do you fit what was proposed into current policy? So now we're here to, today, finally got, um, a, a proposal for how, how it would be incorporated into our policy manual, there would be policy, the, the suggestion from our board attorney is that there would be policy, and then, um, an exhibit that would reflect kind of an outline of procedures. From that procedures, there would, the, uh, the administration would have to develop more specifics on how it's gonna be actually implemented, the procedures is more just kind of a framework for which to operate under. So that's what you have before, before you, is, is that.
Help me understand the part about the, the superintendent's going to add more procedures to this.
So there's definitely some, some more detail that needs to happen underneath this.
But as you can see, we have, um, what the interview and process has been for administrators and what the interview and process has been for teachers, those are the two attachments that are in, um, attached to that policy.
So there's, um, if you go through here, if you go through the documents in your, in, in your packet, um, five colon thirty, the policy talks about, the first section is who this applies to, and there are some specific questions from the attorney that, that we need to respond on who this applies to, how do you determine, when it talks about how this applies, the exception on substitutes, how do you define substitutes, you know, do you, do you, do we make a distinction between a short-term substitute, like for a day because of a sickness, versus a long-term, like for maternity leave? How do, how do we address, address that issue? I mean, or do, do we want to address that issue? Do we want to make a distinction, dealing with transfers and so forth? The next section is, um, general hiring criteria and process, just saying, what are, what is the district's ideals in terms of what kind of candidates we're looking for, what, what kind of characteristics do we, do we expect them to demonstrate? Those are ideals, and then those ideals should be incorporated into evaluations going forward, and how, what we expect of our staff members, whether they're certified teachers, paraprofessionals, secretaries, custodians, whoever, this is, this is kind of what we're looking for, anyone who impacts students. And then it goes into hiring process, there is, as a suggestion from the working committee, there's an anti-nepotism, uh, section that tries to address, you know, not only that we, we prohibit, um, the acts of nepotism, but it also tries to address even the perception of nepotism in, in our hiring process. Talks about the investigations, requirements, the physical education, examination requirements, orientation program, there's an update on the last page, uh, that was actually in press update eighty-four that addresses abuse and neglected child reporting, and that's incorporated here as well. But for, my expectation is for our next committee meeting, that, I hope that you'll be able to read through our board attorney's comments and some of the questions that are embedded in those comments, so we can have some discussion about that.
David, uh, could we have a whole policy committee meeting devoted to this topic? We, it's been, it's kind of been at the end of just about every agenda, we never get through it. And, uh, and I think there's probably a lot of questions that this doesn't address, uh, even, even as much work as they did on the policy, that probably still doesn't address a lot of things, and I think we might want to surface them. And also, talking about internal procedures.
Well, that might go beyond policy, then maybe that's a board meeting discussions.
Well, well, that might be true, but I think maybe to be able to have enough time to surface what belongs in the policy and what belongs, uh, you know, maybe at another forum or on another.
Special meeting.
Yeah, and what we would expect to get, for example, um, what, what have we done in the past here, um, when, not this year, but in, um, previous years, um, when we've hired, when the, when we've made an offer to a candidate that the board has not yet approved it, and we issue a, what is, I forget what that's called, where you issue a notice to the newspaper about your finalist candidate, um, you know what I'm talking about? I forget what the, no, I mean, we've actually, you know, in other words, you're calling them a candidate, not a, you're hired, you.
Well, what I would.
And I want to know, do we want that in our policy, whether we're actually gonna continue to do that?
Yeah, yeah, what I would submit would, would be that, you know, it, if we have a meeting like that, we can, uh, that's not about trying to look at what we've done in the past, but just exactly, what do we want to do going forward?
Well, going forward, well, going forward, but that would be the type of thing I would like to see addressed.
Yeah.
Are we, you know, because I think, um, you know, do we want to announce in the paper before the board has actually voted on it, that we pretty much have a candidate?
Yeah, you know, we're going, you know, what, I'm fine with having that discussion, what I would like to do is, we're going through a process, I would like to try to complete this process here, and we can expand upon it, you know, nothing's ever set in absolute marble stone here, so.
But so, but.
The starting point would be the next.
Right, because the working committee did, did, it's brought here, it's been, you know, our, our board attorney has spent extensive amount of time trying to go through the legalities of it all.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not.
So, so what I'm suggesting is that we just complete that and then continue to deal it, because the hiring is, is absolutely critical to the success and sustainability of our district. You know, these are people who are, who are in front of our children every day, so.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with that.
So, so, no, I'm, I'm agreeing with the, uh.
No, but I, my.
The importance of it.
All right, so are you agreeing, then, that we can devote at least, we put it on the agenda first, and maybe devote at least twenty minutes to a half hour on this, if that's what it's gonna take?
Yeah, for like, an August meeting, an August, September meeting.
And if I can make a suggestion, possibly when we start talking about strategic planning, we can identify the policies like we were talking about earlier, what are the policies that we really want to focus on that are hard ones, and how do they relate, relate to the strategic plan, and how do we dissect them and create those procedures and internal controls?
No, I do agree, it's a good strategic planning discussion, a lot of this will come out of, will come out of those discussions.
What are the policies related to each area? You know, so if it's specifically hiring or financial or operational, what are those policies related to that?
All right, all right, so with that, I'm gonna call this meeting to a close at seven thirty-five.